Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McGurven. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we excuse the action, council member.
Second.
And moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, we excuse council member McGurven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, we have, uh, first item on the agenda, a special proclamation.
Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas it has been estimated that every nine seconds, a woman is beaten by her husband or boyfriend in this country, and in more than half of those instances, children under the age of 12 are present. And whereas more than half of the abusers responsible for domestic violence-related fatal shootings were prohibited by law from owning firearms. And whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and sustained by indifference. And whereas the city of Renton is working to improve the overall response to and the reduction of domestic violence in our region with awareness to the cultural differences in our community. And whereas October is nationally recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim October 2019 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Renton. And I encourage everyone in our community to take an active role in supporting all victims so they can lead healthy lives, safe from violent and abusive behavior. And witness where I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this seventh day of October 2019, signed by Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the proclamation be approved, is read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince. The council adopted proclamation is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. It's really unfortunate that this is becoming a bigger, tragic situation that we're facing, every community is facing on a regular basis. We're really fortunate to have a victim's advocate working for the City of Renton who is here tonight to receive this proclamation on behalf of the police department, Tina Harris.
Good evening, I just have a few words, if you don't mind. Mayor Law, council members, and the Renton residents. Thank you for taking this time to recognize the importance of domestic violence in our community and for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'd like to take this moment to remember a few members of our community who've passed away due to domestic violence. Our most recent victims have been Natalie Galucci, Lila Wilson, Dean LaHau, Fantoma, Barbara Imbarretta, Kathy Chow, Jessica Scholl, Allison Leeny, Megan Smith. These individuals have lost their lives due to domestic violence in our community. As these individuals have lost lives, many lives have been saved. They've been saved by community-based programs such as the YWCA and DON, REWA, which is for Refugee Women's Alliance, Consejo, Centro de Rendu, churches, other intervention and prevention specialists, and others that have assisted in our community to keep these individuals safe. The City of Renton continues to secure funding on a federal level with grants and also on a local level with a general fund to assist these victims and families on a day-to-day basis. We have, to date, we have served approximately 570 victims of domestic violence in our community. And we've provided three times that amount in contacts or direct victim services. Domestic violence calls are still some of the most dangerous calls for law enforcement officers. At times, guns are used, making the lethality of the call even that more, much more dangerous for law enforcement. With the increased cost of housing, rent, and the ability to find affordable housing and homes, victims of domestic violence are becoming homeless at a larger rate than in the past few years. Our shelters are full, and many of the women and children and men are left sleeping in local area churches with friends or family or waiting for appropriate housing. The City of Renton prosecutors, the courts, probation, EHM, fire, and law enforcement officers continue to provide ongoing support for the victims by holding defendants accountable, support and safety planning of the residents, and the needs of the services within our community. As a domestic violence victim advocate, I'm always humbled and honored to continue to serve the Renton residents, and I appreciate the support of the council and Mayor Law during October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tina. Thanks for all the great work you do. We appreciate it. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, we have a very special presentation to give to our airport manager, Jim Seitz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and the members of the city council. I'm Jim Seitz, Transportation Director. And thank you for allowing me to publicly recognize an important professional achievement by Harry Burnett, who is our airport manager. Harry is a member of the American Association of Airport Executives, and he's recently completed all the academic requirements of the association to become an accredited airport executive. To receive this designation, Harry has completed a exam of 180 questions and was interviewed by the peers within his association. And in addition to that, Harry met some of the other requirements by having both a master's of public administration and a master's of business administration. So Harry is a, very much a high achiever. And, uh, the association actually sent us a plaque, and if I could have Harry step forward. And, uh, the plaque, like I say, was sent by the Association of American Airport Executives, and I'll read the plaque. It says, "Harry G. Burnett, having, who having served or successfully completed all academic requirements as prescribed by the Board of Examiners and having met the other professional requirements of the association, is hereby certified by the Board of Directors as an executive member in the Association of Airport Executives and is granted the designation of Accredited Airport Executive." Congratulations, Harry. What did you want to say? Put him on the spot here.
Harry, congratulations. We're really proud of all your hard work.
Thank you. I'm not a, uh, I'm not a speaker at all, but, uh, it's a pretty plaque, and I thank you, the city council and the mayor, for the support.
Thanks, Harry. Congratulations again. Well, we gotta get a picture of these two. Thanks, Taylor. Thank you. Congratulations, Harry. Okay, now we're gonna move on to a public hearing, and we've got a bunch of people here that are gonna provide us with some information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cliff Long from Community and Economic Development, together with David Buhi on our Economic Development Team. And we're also joined by Diane Uteck, our Community Development Block Grant Coordinator, to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. Tonight's public hearing is regarding the 2020 allocation of community development block grant funds in the amount of $701,407. The City of Renton receives an annual allotment of the community development block grant funds via an agreement with King County. Beginning in 2015, we started utilizing those funds to expand on some physical improvements, as well as the housing improvements that we have. The proposed 2020 Community Development Block Grant Funding Plan highlights the activities staff recommends utilizing the fund on. Uh, these include funding the Housing Stability Program, the Housing Repair Program, and the Public Facilities Improvement Program. The purpose of the Public Facilities Improvement Program is to improve pedestrian safety, enhance the streetscapes, and serve as an economic development catalyst for under, uh...
Underdeveloped?
Underdeveloped portions of the city, yeah. The 2020 Public Facilities Improvement Fund will be used to complete a phase or portion of the downtown streetscape improvement project. Prior year, fund, prior year's CDBG funding utilized to hire an engineering firm to create a multi-phase streetscape improvement plan. This plan will provide a complete roadmap for future streetscape improvements and is the next step in seeing the downtown civic core plan brought to life. Any increase or decrease in entitlement will go to or come from that downtown streetscape improvement plan. Uh, if the downtown streetscape improvements aren't under contract by December 31st of 2020, the funds will be reallocated to the Healthy Housing Program. In addition, any program income will also be allocated to the Healthy Housing Program. Following public hearing and consideration of public comment, staff is recommending council approve the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Fund allocation and use as presented. You can answer any questions you might have about the, the funding or the program.
Okay. Any questions from council? Was that, uh, you're concluded with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wanted to testify on the public hearing? What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
Excuse me, I can hardly talk here for a second. The, uh, the funds be used as presented.
Okay, I think we'll have to...
Close the public hearing. Oh, we gotta, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that the public hearing be closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Do we take action tonight on this?
Uh, yes, sir, if we can, uh, if I motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Person.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that the Community Development Block Grant Funds allocation and use, uh, summary be adopted.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that the Community Development Block Grant Funds allocation be adopted this evening. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I have, uh, two items for you this evening. The first is, the Public Works Department would like to remind residents to help us prevent local residential street flooding by monitoring catch basins near your home and keeping them clear of leaves and other debris. Streets, street sweepers are dispatched daily to clean up debris along major arterials, but, um, keeping an eye on that and notifying the city will be helpful. The second item is, last Thursday and Friday, Teamsters Local 25 from Massachusetts set up a picket line outside Republic Service Facilities. Republic Service Teamster members honored the picket line, which caused the cancellation of solid waste collection services. Customers were informed of the service disruption via direct calls to their phone, and messages were communicated via the Republic Services website and the city's social media accounts, including Facebook and Nextdoor. As of Monday, October 7th, the service has been restored, and those customers who missed their materials, uh, collected will now be collected on Saturday, October 12th. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrison. I want to mention, uh, we had a meeting today with, um, Republic folks, um, to discuss this, and we're reviewing the contract obligation as it pertains to labor impacts, because we know that this had an impact on our, on our residents. And so we're gonna try to figure out what type of remedy to address that. Okay, moving on to audience comments. We have two people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium. Give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. Jason Collins.
Yeah, the, uh, waste management, I think, makes 36 an hour, and they only make 22 at, uh, Republic, so that's really good for the people at Republic. Um, the, okay, so I heard St. Anthony's pastor kinda got hit by something, right? Like, almost died or whatever, right? And I almost got hit by something once, too. And, um, I've heard it's been in Vietnam, Mexico, Russia. Been referred to as like the Chip or the 69ers, right? Anyway, the first one's insulin, so try to catch it, right? So, um, Pavone and Marcel Maxwell are the only two signs up of, like, all of downtown, right? So what did happen to Corman and Perez's? Did they get those back? And, um, so, um, um, I saw the Good Neighbor place, right? Get robbed, right? Like, kind of? I, like, passed by while the cops are there. Are the, are the cops supposed to be at the register? Like, I mean, if I was gonna, I would wait for the manager to come and then open the manager, register with the manager, right? So there's two people watching, right? But I didn't see a manager there. I just saw five cops and one at the register, so that kinda looked shady, so, um... Sorry, I'm out on the streets, and I cannot go to bed without putting my phone in my underwear, so everything is shady to me, too. So, um, speaking of which, a P.O. box, I said this, I sent a message to the mayor, and I said, "Hey, you could fix your issue roll by getting the homeless P.O. boxes that have places behind a locked door in a locked unit to put their phone instead in their underwear, all right? And you get correspondence, and that is only one day in jail, all right? You would maybe not have as many FTA's, be able to communicate with the party that you're trying to have causes, and they would be having a place to catch their effects." It was deleted in 1890, proclaimed, um, um, it was abolished in 1880, or 1818? The issue roll thing? You really gotta get on it before AALC or somebody get like that, because, you know, African-American lead of color or somebody, maybe catches it. Like, I got a shoplifting ticket for $4.65, pay the thing back before I ever go to court. Go to court, can't get a jury trial, which I got held in Akeem for. I'm looking at, because I took a deal to drop it down to, which is a dropping it up, all right? Dropping it up to a first-degree trespass, which is a, which is a gross misdemeanor from a misdemeanor, which I don't even think you can do, but I took the deal anyway, because I don't think you can do it, right? Because it's kinda setting up a lawsuit. So, the, um, right now, because of a charge for vandalism of public, illegally placed public signage, which Corman and Perez are both actually could charge whoever it is who took down their signs and put up their signs in place of where they put theirs. Because you're, according to Renton rules, you're allowed 14 days after the election. And they're, I went to the elections office, and the elections office says that they're gonna put a line in for a write-in, all right? So you could still technically run, even though your name is not on the ballot, all right? So, the, I've heard largest lawsuit in all of America by taking out a, oh, write-in line, that's what I heard. But, um, yeah, anyway, that was it. So, considering all of my signs came down, when I put made on myself, and they were biodegradable, temporary political signage, right? Sorry. I hate Coroplast. I've worked with it my whole life. It does not biodegrade. I can hit with acetone and remove all the letters off the shit. And it will not biodegrade, ever, all right? Like, so when you, that stuff gets left in the ditch, it's just sitting in the ditch, putting plastic in the ocean. And everybody's seen the Starbucks with this turtle with his nose full of plastic, right? Like, I just have an issue with... So those signs, I hope, got back to the owners of those signs and did not just get thrown in the trash? Because that's another, like, 15 grand per... Like, if you make enough of them, you can easily get it up there, all right? So, anyway, have a good day.
Thank you. Next is, uh, is it KJ?
Uh, yeah, it's Chell.
Oh, okay, sorry. I knew I was gonna mess that up.
No, I'm used to it.
I apologize.
Yeah, the KJ is like a C.
Okay.
So do I have to, like, lean into this thing?
No, I think, if you just speak up, we'll hear you.
Okay, yeah. Um, so, I decided to come down and talk about the recent...
I'm sorry, can you state your name?
Oh, yeah, sorry. My first time doing this, um, in any city hall. My name is Chell Stendall, and I'm a resident of Renton and homeowner. Um, I'm originally from Ravensdale area, and I've lived in Renton for approximately 10 years. Been a homeowner for about four. Um, so, yeah, uh, they didn't pick up the garbage and recycling. It was the week for the garbage and recycling on last Thursday. Sorry, can't think of the exact date right now. Um, I know today's the 7th, but I'm not gonna sit here and show you how, uh, how I have to think about that. But, um, as you know, the last time it was picked up, garbage and recycling, that is, was two weeks prior to that. So, as, and I know you just touched on this, and you said you met with Republic Services today, which was good to hear, so thank you. Some of my questions are already answered, I guess, but it went from, okay, it wasn't picked up on Thursday, today, to it'll be picked up tomorrow, Friday, to, okay, Friday, a call, it'll be picked up tomorrow, Saturday. Was not picked up on Saturday. I know you know all this. It was not picked up on Saturday. It wa, and then it was like some obscure message, and then the day they announced that it's now going to be picked up. So it went from a one-day delay to a two-day delay to a nine-day delay. And especially when you have a system like the City of Renton does, and I... It was like that when I moved here, where they pick up... And not, by the way, not many people put out on those off weeks where it's just yard waste. Not very many people do that. If you're paying for that, I feel sorry for you, because, well, I... If the expectation is that everyone is putting yard waste out or compostables on that week, and then that's part of what you're paying for? I mean, it's like one in, I mean, it's estimated like one in 30 households does that. So, I mean, my recommendation would be to go back to the every-week system. A lot of communities still do that. It's not like it's not green to do that. Not in this society. I'm sorry. Um, I'm, I'm pro, you know, salmon and, and, uh, sustainable buildings and things like that, but this is like not the same thing. Like, if we talked ourselves into that a long time ago, is that being the reason? Doesn't make that much sense, because now here we are. And I, and basically, I don't understand why it went from a one... First of all, I don't understand why it went from a one-day delay to a two-day delay to a nine-day delay. And you probably don't, didn't know that either or something, because they probably told you, "Oh, well, no, this is the next date we can," and it's like you're looking at your contract or something. But I just wanted to come down and express my feelings about it. I just felt like it kind of on a whim. But, I mean, it just seems like they should be able to pick it up this week. I don't know why. What, they don't wanna pay him overtime? I, I don't know. Sounds like that might be the case. And, uh, yeah, it's funny how they just, they're in here because of Bill Gates is pretty random. But, uh, wait, let me, let me, let me finish. If today's the 7th, that would've made Thursday the, uh, 3rd. The 3rd, okay, good. I circled back to that and I'll be able to figure it out. Okay, um, well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And I, I wanna just mention that, uh, you raised some very good points.
Yeah.
Some of them we did actually raise today. But one of the things that we told them that is important for us to get our arms around is the fact that we are unique with the, every other week for garbage and, um, and the recyclables, uh, even though we do have the week, uh, weekly composting that we pick up. So the impact, when you have these kinds of delays, is much, much more. And so it's one of the issues that we're talking about, and it's not, it's not out of, uh, the possibility that, uh, the council, once we're up for renewal, revisits, uh, from the every other week to weekly. It's, you know, you just raised, you raised very good points, and we know that there are impacts when these things happen. There were, we did receive an explanation today on some of the questions that you just asked in regards to the one-day delay and then the next-day delay. And, um, the individual who runs our division that handles solid waste just happens to be sitting back there. And if you, if you could give him your name and some contact information, we can make sure you receive the details you received today.
And, Mr. Mayor, before Chell takes his seat, can I ask you, or just make a comment as well? Yeah, so I also wanna thank you, um, since, um, but my pickup is on Tuesday, so we, we weren't impacted. So I, I appreciate your coming and sort of explaining from your perspective, um, what it was like. And, um, but I do remember when we had a snowstorm that had delayed the pickup at my house, and, um, and it just seemed like it was the same kinda creeping thing. It was, okay, well, we're gonna get it tomorrow. And, and I kinda understood with the snow, the snow hadn't gone away, and... But, um, man, trying to store like, whatever that is, 96 gallons of, um, of recyclables and stuff got really difficult. And I remember thinking, I was glad I had a garage and a place to put all this stuff, because it, in the end, in, in my case, yeah, it was another two-week cycle. And so having a month worth of, um, basically garbage saved up was, was really difficult. I wanna just let you know I'm very sympathetic to what you explained, and, and I appreciate that the mayor is, is holding Republic to account for this. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have nine items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I move the consented gen to be adopted as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the consent agenda be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
Uh, no unfinished business.
Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Corman.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I have unfinished business to present. I'll start with the Transportation Committee, and then I'm gonna do Community Services after that.
Excuse me. Okay, Transportation Aviation Committee. Uh, we have a, uh, committee report regarding the BNSF grade-crossing signal at Williams and Hauser. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute grade-crossing signal installation agreement for Williams Avenue South at Hauser Way South with BNSF for the Williams Avenue South and Wells Avenue South, uh, conversion, uh, project. This is signed by the vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Uh, first of all, just to simplify this, uh, to explain that because those streets are becoming two-way streets, um, the, the railroad signals have to be visible from both directions now. So this is our working with BNSF to, um, to make them that way. Um, with that, I move approval of, um, the Transportation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Person, that the Transportation Committee report be adopted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Okay, the next report is regarding, uh, a crossing with the Wells Avenue South at Hauser Way South. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute grade-crossing signal installation agreement for Wells Avenue South at Hauser Way South with BNSF for the Williams Avenue South and Wells Avenue South Conversion Project. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and member.
I move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Perez. The council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Okay, the final Transportation Aviation Committee report is for the utility construction agreement, uh, for the I-405 widening. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into an inter-local utility construction agreement, UTB 1296, with the Washington State Department of Transportation in the amount of $366,500 for the relocation of city utilities and installation of new city communication and signal conduits related to the I-405 Renton to Bellevue widening and express toll lanes project. This is signed by the committee vice chair member.
Move the council concur to the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Perez. The council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
And then, Mr. Mayor, as substitute chair for Community Services Committee, I'd like to, um, uh, bring a report forward for that committee as well.
Okay, Community Services Committee, committee report, Renton Sister City Association joint agreement. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign an agreement between the City of Renton and the Renton Sister Cities Association in the amount of $6,000 annually for a term of six years. This is signed by, uh, the committee members.
I think that's for 10 years.
10 years.
10 years.
For a term of 10 years. Is that not what I said?
Yeah, you did. You just said it just now.
10 years, $6,000 for 10 years. Thanks.
Move that council concur to the committee report.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's all, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Finance Committee has one committee report.
The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Ready?
Go ahead.
Accounts payable, total payment of $7,524,113.35 in payroll benefit withholding vouchers and seven wire transfers, and then payroll is a total payment of $1,484,081.76 for payroll vouchers, which includes 725 direct deposits and 13 checks. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to legislation, we have two resolutions and two ordinances.
Okay, the first resolution is regarding school resource officers for the Renton School District. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement for school resource officers with Renton School District Number 403 for the 2019 through 2021.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, the second resolution is regarding the Renton, or different school district capital facility plans and impact fees.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Are you okay with that, Jason? Did you have anything else to say on that?
No.
Was that okay? It moved by Mr. Prince and quickly seconded by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the first ordinance is for second and final reading is regarding the Highlands Meadows annexation. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, annexing certain territory to the City of Renton. Highland Meadows annexation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right, the final ordinance for second and final reading is regarding the amended SCORE interlocal agreement. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Renton, Washington, regarding the city's participation in the South Correctional Entity, SCORE, authorizing the execution of an amended and restated interlocal agreement relating to SCORE, approving the city's capital contribution related to refunding bonds to be issued to refinance the SCORE facility, approving other matters related thereto, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nope, roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a roll call.
Roll call, Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Hey, now the ayes have it. Thank you. Thanks, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have the committee, the whole meeting to be announced for Monday, October 14th at 5:30 PM. Have four items, the...
Oh, and it'll be in the council chambers, by the way.
Number one is I-976 briefing, the 2020 legislative priorities briefing, and then I'm adding to that the regional fire authority ordinance for clarifying how our members are selected from the council. And on top of that, emerging issues in the city. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, October 14th at 4:30 PM in the council conference room,